United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Marler.
Here.
Christine Casto.
She's excused this evening.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here.
First on our agenda is recognition of Fort Morgan State Bank for 35 years of business in the city of Fort Morgan. Mr. Miller?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We wanted to recognize FMS Bank tonight. A couple of weeks ago, they celebrated 35 years of business in our community. Quite the accomplishment, and they've been a great community partner. As our offices, my office and the Economic Development Office has started, I've had the chance to spend a lot of time with their bank president, John Sneed, with a lot of the projects that we're hopefully bringing to the table. So, gotten to know him and his staff as we've worked through these processes, and I haven't been here as long as most of his staff have, or FMS for that matter, but the five years I've been here and worked for the city, it's a prevalent name in the business world amongst the banking community here locally, and we appreciate what they do for our community, for our small businesses. And we wanted to recognize them tonight with a plaque and give council the chance to say any words that they would like. So if I can have John and Christine come up here, we'll present this plaque. And aside, I heard a lot about John Sneed from my father-in-law, and as I've gotten to know him, the small world that is, John and I graduated from the same college, Missouri Valley, out in Marshall, Missouri. Couple of years apart, and I've, we had the privilege of going to an alumni social here a couple of years ago, and I found John's yearbook picture. So I won't share that tonight. If John doesn't behave, we have some ammunition against him, but I wanted to give this to you guys.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Speech?
Speech.
I know we appreciate Fort Morgan State Bank and the community. You've been on here quite some time, and I've served on the airport advisory with Mr. Sneed also, and been a big part of our community. Thirty-five years is quite an accomplishment.
In France, been here all thirty-five of them.
Just about. Anybody else have anything you want to say? Should we clap?
We always clap.
We wish you another thirty-five. Next, we have Shelley Bristol's husband as employee of the quarter. Dwayne.
It is my privilege this evening, Mayor and Council, to present. Come on down. Dwayne Bristol is our employee of the quarter, and I say it's a privilege. I've worked for the city now for about ten years, and I think I've known Dwayne all those ten years, and he's always got a positive attitude. He does some pretty interesting jobs for the electric department, and I've never seen him complain. Does he ever complain?
No.
Never complains. He's always setting the example, leading by example. He really, in my opinion, embodies our goals that we try to do here at the city of Fort Morgan. Positive communication, respect for others, leads by example, and exceptional customer service, and safety is really important. You'll hear a little bit more about that tonight. So, tonight, it is my privilege to present to Dwayne, do you want the gift card first? A nice gift card and a certificate of his achievement as the city employee of the quarter. He was nominated by his peers, and he took this very nice photo. You get to keep this one.
Aww.
Nice photo. And what I'm going to do is shake your hand and tell you thank you, and I'm going to turn it over to Doug, your supervisor, to thank you and say a few words, and then if you'd like, you get the, you get the mic. If you'd like, or we can invite your mic down. If you would.
It might be better for you to say something.
First of all, I asked him if he wanted to say a few words, and it was no. So Jeff hit the nail on the head. He comes to work every morning with a smile on his face, never complains, never says anything bad about anything or anyone, so makes my job easy when I have employees like this. So, thank you, Dwayne.
Congratulations.
The interesting thing is that you didn't start in 1940.
Nope.
Starting in 1940.
Lot of years ago. So eighteen. Yeah. I remember those years.
They were good.
Yeah, they were. Thanks, Dwayne. Next, we have a presentation on possible action on an appointment of Robert Schneider to the library advisory board. Are you going to take this, Lisa?
Sure.
Josh.
Oh, never mind. Josh just got it.
We received an application from Robert Schneider for an appointment to the library advisory board. The advisory board reviewed his application. He was actually present at that meeting, and the board is recommending to council the approval, an appointment of Robert Schneider to the library advisory board.
Would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution appointing Robert Schneider to the library advisory board.
Second. Is he here tonight?
He is here tonight. I didn't see you start.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries on a unanimous vote of six to zero with council member Casto absent.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. I sat on the board as a, before I was on council, as a board member, and then I was the council appointee to it, and it's a great board, a great group of people. You'll enjoy your time working with them.
Yeah, I hope they enjoy that. I mean, just being there for one meeting is kind of hard to know what's going on.
They'll take good care of you.
Next, we have a presentation on 2016 Safety Award of Excellence for American Public Power Association. Mr. Nation. I hardly recognized you without your hat on, Doug.
I know, my hair. I know it's tough. It's tough for me not to wear a hat.
You should have seen him on Monday.
No, you shouldn't.
Yeah. Don't get to see the pictures, so, and we'll have the pictures. So, we have actually two awards that we want to present to council as basically being our governing board for our electric utility, but we had the privilege and the honor to go down to San Antonio, Texas on Monday and receive both of these awards on behalf of the city. And I gave Doug a hard time because I actually made him, you know, show up in a dress shirt with no ball cap, and he cleans up, believe it or not. He cleans up.
Yeah, we're not going to believe that until we see the pictures.
We've got the pictures. I think they're in John's possession now, so hopefully we'll have some official press releases coming out on both of these awards, but, so. The first one that we got is a safety award, and I think is kind of a general thing. The APPA, the American Public Power Association, is one of the national associations that we belong to through our involvement in MEAN, and we do a lot of different things through APPA. They support public power across the United States, and they're a good organization to belong to. Not only do they give us a lot of different avenues to get training and certifications through, but they also do a lot of advocacy at the federal level for those things that we need to protect our public power systems and everything. And so, I'll let Doug explain what the safety award was, and then we'd just like to present it to the mayor, but I'll let Doug explain it.
The safety award, it's basically your incidents, your accidents, how you report it and how you document it. So, we're fortunate enough this year to get first place. Our utilities consider medium, so we have over 5,000 customers. So it's a medium utility with 23,000 hours, I think, of exposure to our employees with no accidents. We had one incident, but we still ended up in first place, so. You all know me, safety's priority in my department, and we start there and finish there during the day. I was happy to receive this and proud of this one.
Something to be proud of.
Congratulations.
So, along with some of the other awards, the safety one goes with, you know, out mentioning what these guys do every day, and the issues and everything that goes along with running a electric powers, you know, system. They're always looking out for them, you know, the guys that are there and then making sure that they're safe. But along with that, we also are there providing power and making sure that our customers are being served all the time and trying to minimize the amount of outages and everything with running this type of electric system. And so, this next award, and I'm like, Doug, this one's a big one. This is one of those that there are not a lot of municipal power associations or entities like ourselves that actually have this type of award, and so this one's, to me, is the big one that we won. And so I'll let Doug explain what the RP3 award is, also from the APPA.
This one takes a little more time and a little more effort. It bases it on four things. It's reliability, customer service, workforce development, and safety. So, I was a little nervous about doing this one. This is, this is a tough one. And Jeff had mentioned it in the past, and I was a little kind of nervous about trying it, so I jumped in this year and tried it, and a couple of us worked on it. Lot of data, a lot of stuff that we needed to be doing, which we're doing, so we were lucky enough to get this on our first try. So, I'm proud of this one. It shows our customers that we're doing all we can for them in our municipal utilities. There was four. I changed the map with five. Now there's five of us in Colorado.
And I'm proud of Doug and his entire department. You know, we've always recognized what a great department the electric department is and Doug's leadership and the leadership of everybody in that department. And I'd mentioned him a few years ago, you know, this RP3 thing I heard about, how would we do on that? And he was a little apprehensive, but, you know, one thing about the electric department, if you ask him to do something, they get it done. And what was very good about, they usually don't get it your first year.
No.
Usually have to apply several years, and the fact that they were able to get it the first year is really a testament to the fact that they do an excellent job in that department, and we should all be grateful. Every morning when we turn on the lights, that we've got a dedicated group of people that are making sure that we're safe and that those lights are going to come on when we need them. So, thank you.
They're a great group of guys, so without them, we wouldn't have this.
But mostly, we want to thank you as the council and the mayor, because you guys are the ones that make our jobs possible with what we have, and without that support from you guys, this type of award wouldn't even be possible anyway. So, we want to thank you, and then we'll present this to you also, Ron.
Well, I know that reliability, we've had...
We've had years where the squirrels were terrible. And you guys have really, really cut down the outages.
When your guys show up on the job or we're customers, they're always willing to go the extra.
That's a reflection of you guys letting us do what we do on our systems.
That's a reflection of your department and the integrity that you guys have within that department. You have to watch out for each other. You guys get one oops on your job with what you guys do. It's a very highly skilled, dangerous position, and what you guys do, you do well, you show respect, and you are a great asset to our city and the community.
Thank you.
Great job. Thanks.
Next, we have possible action on a historic landmark designation for 304 Main Street, the Warner Building.
Good evening again. For some of you, you haven't had the chance to go through a historic landmark designation on a local level, but the Historic Preservation Board meets as needed and required with applications that come through the building department's office, and we meet, review those, sort of test their factual accuracy, and make sure that a couple of the key items in this application are checked off, and with the Historic Preservation Board's sort of recommendation, we bring them to council. Our hope as we continue to designate some of these is to push for a grant that will produce plaques that'll be installed on these properties. For those that do receive the local designation, it opens the door for their businesses to apply for grants to improve building facades and so forth, to bring their buildings back to sort of a previous condition and state. So, this was presented to the Historic Preservation Board as the Warren Building. The reality is, it's the Warner Building, so the board made the recommendation for approval with that modification. I'll bring some pictures up here as I read some of the details and historical significance here, but all four of these properties tonight are owned by Mr. Tibbetts, and all four sort of run together. Apologize, I don't know how to...
That's okay, we can do that.
It's about halfway. Rotate right.
There it is. So, the Warner Building, a couple of key factors which are tied to most of these designations are they're associated with a historic person who made a significant contribution to our society or city, and then ultimately, it's typically, these properties have been recognized on the historical and architectural survey of Fort Morgan. Those are typically the two key things. So, I will highlight briefly, but this building, origins are somewhat obscure, was associated with George W. Warner, Fort Morgan's earliest developer and promoter. Warner maintained his real estate office in the building after first operating out of W.H. Clattworthy's Hardware Store and first post office, and later occupied the building which had the town's first schoolhouse located on Main Street. Warner was co-founder of the Fort Morgan Times in 1884 with Lehman Baker, and later in 1895 wrote an Oasis in the Desert, a promotion guide to Morgan County. He also actively participated in land sales and development, eventually acting on his own behalf. As a politician, he was involved in the formation of Morgan County out of Old Weld. The first city election was held in his office, as was the first organizational meeting for setting up Morgan County. He was the first clerk of the district court and the first justice of the peace in Morgan County. His house is located on Sherman Street in the historic district, and Warner Street was named after him, which runs behind his house and fronting the Morgan County Justice Center. This building was originally one of the town's finest, but in recent years has been remodeled extensively, obscuring its high Victoria functional origins. So, the board made recommendation to approve this local designation, so would ask the council's approval as well.
Would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution on an application of historic landmark designation for a property on 304 Main Street, Warren Building.
Second. Warner.
Yeah, it'd be Warner.
Oh, okay. I was just reading what was on here.
Yeah, apologies.
I would like to amend that from Warren to Warner.
We have already designated a Warren building.
I second with the amendment.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a historic landmark designation for 306 Main Street, the Kinkle Building.
So, as previously mentioned, this property also is tied to historic persons and is also listed on the historical, the state historical society, excuse me, the architectural survey of Fort Morgan. It was built sometime before 1899. This building was the fourth and final location for the meat market of Louis Kinkle, who first came to Fort Morgan in 1882 and returned to live in 1894, operated a butcher shop and meat market at various times with his brother Carl's, a man named Daley, based upon a newspaper advertisement in 1897 for the Kinkle and Daley City Meat Market. And after his brother moved to Littleton, his son Carl and nephew Albert, the market spanned a period of over 50 years. Subsequent occupants in the building have been Guy Shive's menswear and Teeman's clothes. The building has undergone several remodelings, including the rebuilding of the storefront in 1907, and construction of a rear addition by Louis Kinkle, a remodeling by Guy Shive, and extensive alterations by the Teemans that have obliterated the building's facade. And this is kind of where we're at today.
So which building is 306?
It's, 306 is, I believe, the...
Used to be Business Mart?
I believe it's the building Tibbetts offices in today.
Okay.
And so we're Bijou, Tibbetts Office today, Business Mart, and Covert, working in that order. So, Historic Preservation Board had recommended this for approval as well, so staff's recommendation is council approve.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I offer a resolution approving the application for historic landmark designation for the property at 306 Main Street or the Kinkle Building.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a historic landmark designation for 308, 310 Main Street, the Farnsworth Building.
Showed the same picture twice. I guess I did. Apologies. The Farnsworth Building erected in 1906 was built for a grocery store of Joseph Farnsworth, son of the town's earliest merchants. Joseph and his brother John Jr. were brought to Fort Morgan in 1883 by their father, John Farnsworth Senior. The elder Farnsworth operated the Farnsworth House Hotel, opened in September of 1884 as the town's first house and hostelry. The family, like most early comers, were socially and politically active. Joseph served as mayor, city clerk, county clerk, among other things. The Farnsworth Grocery Store occupied the south half of the building's first floor and adjoining the Kinkle Meat Market in adjacent building. The north half of the building was first occupied by the Golden Rule Store, reportedly a Jewish emporium. The Barnett Mercantile Company purchased the stocks of both stores in 1907 and sold dry goods. The north half of the building later became the Busy Bee Confectionery and later the Busy Bee Cafe. Subsequent tenants included Moto Day Clothing Store and the Business Mart, the present tenant. The Historic Preservation Board also recommended approval here, and staff's recommendation is the same.
Entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution on the application of historic landmark designation for the property located at 308, 3310 Main Street, known as the Farnsworth Building.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
And we have historic landmark designation for 314 Main Street, Covert Theater.
So, the Covert Theater, as the other three have, checks off the historic persons box in the architectural survey of Fort Morgan. Important to note, we have Mr. Mack, our museum curator. He fact checks all these things and goes in and finds some additional details and side stories tied to these properties. As I go through this, it references a fire, and I'll circle back, but Brian has sort of clarified some of the fire comments here. Grandly named the Covert Opera House, the Motion Picture Theater of U.G. Covert is the largest indoor theater built in Fort Morgan and the only one still operating at present. The other two, USA Theater and a smaller Orient Theater, both also located on Main Street, have long since closed down. Built in 1916, the building was somewhat whimsically eclectic, blending of the 20th century functional and Gothic revival styles with its contrasting corbeled brick, very window sizes, billisters, and, I'm not even going to try that. It was one of the more visually interesting buildings along Main Street. However, a fire gutted the building in the mid-1950s, necessitating a virtual reconstruction. In an effort to make the new structure absolutely fireproof, the facade was demolished and new materials, primary concrete, reused, thus the Covert Theater bears no resemblance of its original appearance. Picture you're looking at is the original Covert. As Brian had done some fact checking on this, the discussion amongst the Historic Preservation Board, Don Oswalt's a member of this board and been here as long as some ways the city has, and has got a lot of stories to tell tied to these properties. He remembers this vividly because he was preparing for a field trip to go watch the release of Bambi and question the 1950s date. And so Brian did some digging and discovered the fire was actually 1944. Donna thought it was 42 to 43 when he was in the fourth grade. You know, the reality here is it would have been probably the largest disaster in the city of Fort Morgan's history with the entire schoolhouse watching Bambi when the building was burnt down, but it was on their walk over to the Covert that the police officer stopped them on their walk to watch the release of Bambi and explained to them that the Covert was burning down and there would be no movie today. So, just an interesting story tied to the property as Don Oswalt remembers it. So, the reference in the application of the 50s is inaccurate, but that fire occurred in 44. You know, completely bringing the building to the ground, and it's been rebuilt since. Board's recommendations to approve, and staff supports that and makes the same recommendation to council.
Can you imagine what those signs on those would be worth in this day and age if, you know, they're just...
They're all porcelain, then.
Yeah, they're just beautiful. I mean, such a great...
I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I offer a resolution approving the application for historic landmark designation for the property at 314 Main Street, also known as the Covert Theater.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Josh.
So, our house was built in 1959, and when we were going through some of the built-in, like, cabinets, we found a movie, like, a ticket stub for the Covert, and it was 60 cents for the ticket. So, I don't know if the museum needs my ticket or something, but Josh, let me know.
Next, we have a presentation on possible action on bids for Emco three-yard trash container. Mr. Evans.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hi.
We went out to bid on our three-yard containers. We've received two bids from MWC and Coys Brothers. Coys Brothers had the lowest bid of $510, and that's what we're recommending that we go with.
So how many of these are you buying?
I would get about 78 for that price. It's a $40,000 budget.
Now, the three-yard, the three-yard containers are, they're not the dumpsters, are the rollouts?
Now, the three-yard containers are, they're not the dumpsters, are the rollouts?
No, they're the big dumpsters. Yeah. Yeah, the rollouts are 68 bucks, something like that.
Anybody have any questions? Where do you store these?
At the Burlington facility.
Where?
Burlington facility.
Okay.
Over by my house.
By your house?
Yep.
The old ones go there, too.
I live in that ward, too.
Over by Clint Anderson and my house.
Well, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving the bid from Coys Brothers for the Emco. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
The Emco three-yard containers?
Second.
Do we need to clarify how many, or is it...
No, just...
Okay. Never mind.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
So, sorry, I just thought of a question. How long will these 78 dumpsters last, yeah?
They're supposed to last around 20 years.
So that's a life expectancy of the dumpster, right?
Yes.
So when we replace them, I mean, when's the next time you're going to have to come back and get another 78 of them?
Probably next year.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, there's so many of them we have out there, just kind of just keeping a rotation going as we can keep up with them.
So we go through about 78 a year?
Yeah, roughly, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation of possible action on bids for upfitting two police patrol vehicles. Mr. Sharp?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as you know, as part of our replacement program, we replace patrol vehicles and outfit them every year. This year, we have two vehicles scheduled to be replaced, and we need outfits for those. The outfit would include the installing of the mobile radio, purchasing and installing the partitions and cages, emergency lightings, sirens, wiring, and the external graphics. We did receive three bids. We advertised a bid on the city Fort Morgan's webpage for about four weeks, beginning March 31st, and we required them to be received by 3:00 p.m. on April 27th. We received three bids, and we are recommending to accept the bid from Wireless Advanced Communications for a cost not to exceed $20,500 per vehicle. This will help us in case there are some changes, modifications that need to be done. It's a little bit higher. I will say that the cost for wireless is a little bit higher than another vendor, and the reason we chose wireless in this case is that the external graphics on the vehicles that we've had done prior with the other company weren't very good. So while we saved money on the front side of it, it's cost us money to replace the graphics, and that company is continuing to use the same graphics where wireless does not.
You going to outfit these like Tims?
Not quite.
Not quite.
Have we done business with wireless before?
We have. We've done business with them many years.
Great.
They actually service all of our portable radios and in-car radios and everything as well.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Wireless Advanced Communications from Evans to do the upfitting for the two vehicles, not to exceed $20,500.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Dan Marler. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation of possible action on bids for rate consulting services for the electric fund. Mr. Nation?
Good evening again. Um, we are on kind of a three-year cycle with our, a lot of our consultants, and we've reached the end of that cycle with not only our electric, but our gas and our water. And so tonight, I've got electric and gas in front of you, and then we'll be coming back at a later date for the water side of it. But first thing we need to talk about is electric rates consulting. As I've outlined in my memo, it's one of those, it's a kind of a specialized field to go through and do all the balancing and determine what those rates need to be set at. We're not collecting too much money, but we're not over-collecting a lot of money. And so we've, for the last three years, have been using JK Consulting, Energy Consulting out of Lincoln, Nebraska. When we submitted the RFP, he submitted again, and after reviewing the four companies, including JK, myself and Mr. Linton kind of agreed that they have the best proposal, and they also have the best prices when we look at them. And so tonight, we're looking at wanting to enter into an agreement, or consulting agreement with them. So I want to be clear that this isn't actually a hardcore bid with a dollar amount. We're looking to enter into a services agreement with them. The reason that we're not doing a hardcore, just this is what we're going to get for rates consulting, is we want to be able to use JK for other things that may come up. We do have situations in our electric system where, like, just last week, we got a request from WAPA about excess hydropower for two months, and we needed to have a quick analysis done. And so with him still being under contract, I was able to call him up and actually utilize his services for something like that. And so, so we'd like to get these guys on a service contract. In that way, we have their rates. They've given us their rates ahead of time, and we know approximately what they're going to be charging us, but then it also leaves it a little more open to where we can call upon them for things. The other thing that comes up is if we have customers approach us that have unusual load requirements, and this is for all the utilities, we can go to somebody with a little more expertise to look at some of that type of stuff and the effects on our system and our rates. And so, so for the electric, I'm in front of you requesting approval for the mayor to sign a services agreement with JK Energy Consulting for rate consulting services for the electric department and System Enterprise.
I was just wondering. I noticed on the next one that you had recommended McFadden, and I noticed that they placed a bid here. Why don't you use McFadden for both of them where you'd have one company doing both of them? I, just as a question.
We used to. McFadden did do both of them for quite a few years, and when we needed, it's kind of, we had a situation come up within the electric department several years ago. It was actually when I first started working here, and we had to hire somebody to do some NERC compliance reporting. And we ended up using JK back then in order, because he had expertise in that and McFadden didn't. And we got to know JK through that experience, and it was one of those things that his electric experience, JK's exceeds McFadden's by quite a bit. He is very familiar with MEAN. He is actually an ex-employee of MEAN, so he understands their side of our electric equation a lot more than McFadden Group ever did. And it's not a slight against McFadden. It's just that JK's company has more experience with that type of stuff, and he just focuses on electrical-type situations. That's why JK didn't put one in on the gas side of it. And when we talk about that, McFadden has an amazing amount of experience in the gas industry, and I'll touch on that when we go over those proposals, but nobody touches him on the gas side of it, so.
Okay, cool. I just kind of wondered when I had noticed that. I thought, well, wouldn't it be easier to deal with one entity, but expertise should exceed convenience, so.
Any other questions?
None.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving for the, let's try that again. I would offer a resolution for approval for the mayor to sign a service agreement with JK Engineering Consulting LLC for rate consulting services for the electric department and the system enterprise.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Dan Marler. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is bids for rate consulting for our gas fund.
Okay. Same spiel, just now on the gas enterprise side of it. You can see, we only actually had three companies that submitted. All three of these did submit on the electric side. Going through and reviewing the other two besides McFadden, you can just tell when you read through them, there's just not a lot of gas experience in those other two companies. They've got a couple smaller jobs that they list in their resumes, but when you look through the major principles in the company that would be representing us, it's almost all water and electric, water and electric, water and electric. And McFadden is, he's been the guy with the city now for, you know, decades and continues to be that person that we rely upon. And so at this point, we're looking to continue that services agreement. We are going to have a discussion with him about the longevity, I guess, of his company, because we do need to know how much longer, because Mike's been at it for a lot of years, and we want to know that he's at least bringing somebody aboard that can train and hopefully know our spreadsheets and everything as we move into this agreement with them. But for now, I'm looking to go ahead and extend that same type of services agreement to McFadden Consulting for the gas enterprise.
And how long are we extending for? I'm sure it's in here.
It's, it's just for a year, but up to three years is under the procurement policy is what we can do.
Three-year agreement contingent upon budget approval each year.
There you go.
Do we need any of that language in the resolution?
Okay.
And McFadden has done our gas for...
Yeah.
Many, many, many years.
Yep. And he's one that we definitely rely upon a lot when we have discussions about, we've got this much gas load in this part of our system, what's the implications? And it takes about a two-minute phone call with him, and he's cranking out responses to us, so.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I have a resolution for you to sign a services agreement with McFadden Consulting Group Incorporated for rate consulting services for the natural gas department and the system enterprise.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you. I'm going to leave these for Clint, because I know he needs extra reading, so.
It always scares me when you come up and you drop things, like, you know?
The pile for the water and wastewater is larger than this. That's why I wasn't ready.
Then I'll take those.
You'll take these.
I just have flashbacks to when we changed the uniform code.
Oh, yes.
And the code, and Mr. Callahan came in and dropped a pile this big of books, and we're like, oh, you don't have to read that, do we?
No, it's smaller than that stack. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the final plat to modify lot lines between Lot 1 and Lot 2 on the Ehrlich Minor subdivision, increasing the size of Lot 2 so a structure, a new structure can be built. This is a public hearing. Please keep public comments to the issues before council. Each speaker is asked to limit their comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations, and I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a time limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it to be necessary in light of the number of people who have signed up to testify. First is the issue of our legal notice. Mr. Brennan, has the hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor. A legal notice of this public hearing appeared in Fort Morgan Times on May 2nd.
Next is a presentation of the application. Mr. Miller?
Good evening again. Apologize in advance. My first minor subdivision, so if you don't get the details you need, I'm here to clarify and provide answers to the best of my ability. This is a minor subdivision of the Ehrlich property. Lot 1 is Ehrlich Toyota. Lot 3 is McDonald's, both of which are obviously built on. Lot 2 is where the new Dodge Ram Jeep dealership sits, or will sit. As this was submitted and reviewed, Lot 2 needed to be modified for lot size requirements to meet the needs of the development that'll be arriving here in town, and then there was some concerns with the future of this property. If it were to be sold, you know, with no easement in place on the west side of Lot 2, it could be problematic for access and a variety of other reasons in the future. So the minor subdivision occurred to reestablish the lot lines for Lot 2. This was taken to planning commission on May 8th for their review. No real questions and pretty straightforward for them in that meeting. The applicant owns both properties, or both Lot 1 and Lot 2, which are zone B1 for mixed-use business, generally allows for various business types, residential use by right. The total application encompasses Lot 1 and 2, which is 3.45 total acres, and cleans up the plat for future development.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Miller?
I have a question. So, right now, the plat is, um, right, so that's showing both where the current lot is, line is, and where they want it to go? Is that what, is that showing both of them?
Do you want me to answer that one?
Yes, go ahead.
If you look at the line between Lot 1 and Lot 3... Yes. If you go straight up, that would be what's currently in the minor subdivision plat. The replat would be to remove that and move it over to the, to the west, making Lot 2 larger. Okay. So, is this going to change traffic flow? A lot of people right now, when they're entering into Lot 3, they will actually enter in Lot 1. They're by the corner of Lot 3 and Lot 1 on the south side, drive up, and then enter into Lot 3 via the northwest corner.
Correct, and that's because there's that easement that currently exists that's valid for that particular purpose exactly.
So is that easement going to remain in place with this?
Correct. That's what's pictured here in the middle between Lot 1 and Lot 3. That section is a current easement. The easement that's being added is the one towards the top of the property between Lot 1 and proposed Lot 2, to make sure that there's accessibility to the backside of Lot 2. So nothing, as far as the McDonald's parking and flow and everything, is changing. The only change is the moving of Lot 2 further west and the addition of the easement that runs along the west side of Lot 2. Everything else will remain the same.
So I don't know that we want to change the, the way people get to their McDonald's.
How big, how big is that easement? Because if I were to look at this directly, I would think that the traffic should be going between the wall, and right now, we all know, there's cars, and we do drive between the cars, which has never made a lot of sense to me.
The cars...
With all the cars.
Yeah, the cars are technically within that easement, but they're, from what I recall in the original presentation of this, the cars are technically within the easement, but also the driving area is as well. So it's, it's pretty wide. My understanding, when this was originally platted, was to create sufficient area if they wanted to add stoplight or anything else so that they could have general two-way traffic flows, et cetera. That hasn't been the case, but that's what's there if needed.
I'm with Dan, though. You don't want to change the traffic flow when people are trying to get to McDonald's.
Any other questions?
That's kind of roundabout, but I'm ready for that.
Next, we'll hear comments from the applicant, if any. Does the applicant wish to address council? Right? No, you're good. Next, here are public comments. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'll ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing.
No, Your Honor.
And now to have council discussion. Is there any questions or discussion of the council? If there is no further discussion by council, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Your Honor, I offer a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Voted. Council action. Mr. Myers?
So council has the option to approve or deny, or if you need additional information, you can table this for a later additional discussion.
I would entertain a resolution accepting the application for the minor subdivision.
Your honor, if I could clarify, this isn't a subdivision, it's, it's a replat of the previous subdivision.
The final replat of the subdivision.
Are you ready?
No resolution?
Oh, no.
We're ready.
I would entertain one.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving case 17-002 MS, the final replat of the Ehrlich Motor Minor, excuse me, Minor subdivision, as was recommended by the planning commission, which upon approval of the replat must be signed by all necessary parties and recorded with the Morgan County Clerk and Recorder.
Second?
Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Lisa Northrup, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks. Go build. Thanks, Ray.
Go forth and build, Ray. Go forth and build.
Next, we have a presentation and possible action on bids for library shelving. Mr. Miller?
He doesn't look like Ms. McCoy, does he?
Chander's going to be very upset. She'd have to be moved to the back end of this agenda in hopes of presenting this, but she's been in, and will be in innovation training the rest of the week. But she's on her way back from Denver right now. She'll probably walk in these doors right as I finish this presentation. But the library as part of the 2017 capital improvement plan has $35,000 in the budget for new library shelving on the upstairs of the library, which includes six fiction stacks, two nonfiction stacks, new books, wall shelving, magazine wall shelving, and additional shelving for the young adult section. This is kind of a completion of what's been a three-year overhaul of that main level of the library. First, the automation and the self-returning system, the flooring, which was done end of last year into the beginning of this year, and then now the shelving. We received three bids. The bids are detailed in the memo with Library Interiors West, JPJ and Associates, and Shelf Image. Staff's recommendation is consideration and approval of the bid by Library Interiors West in the amount of $34,996 to provide all materials, equipment, and labor to remove and dispose of the existing shelving, and to install new shelving for two nonfiction stacks, six fiction stacks, magazines wall, new book wall, and young adult section in the main library of the Fort Morgan Public Library. Library Interiors West is the highest bidder, but one of the bidders required us to remove the shelving, and that's not a task we're necessarily prepared or able to undertake. We learned that lesson the hard way with our flooring project. And secondly, we put this out as kind of a design build and let companies tell us what made the best sense. And Chander was most fond of the Library Interiors West proposal and didn't fully agree with the approach taken by, you know, the other company. So it is high, it is the highest bid, but, you know, the difference in amounts here is pretty minor and support her decision, so.
Is she coming back specially for this?
Yes, she was. Well, they're not staying down there. They're coming back every night, but she was coming, yeah, to present this and.
I was going to say, you're hard.
She managed it, but.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Miller? There are none. I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the bid from Library Interiors West in an amount of $34,996 for library shelving.
Second?
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you. And we take innovation seriously.
Yes, we do.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have 2018 budget calendar, review of our revenues. Mr. Wells and Ms. Kinney. Revenues are fun.
Revenues are fun.
Yay.
If we have enough.
If not, it's not fun.
So included in your table file, you'll find what we're going to look at here. We want to go over revenues with council before we start budgeting to give us an idea of making sure we're, we're being conservative in our projections. And then we go out and spend the money that we project we're going to get. So just from a perspective, we are very conservative moving forward in what we budget for revenues in hopes that we obviously don't come in over revenues. And we're also very conservative on the other side, on the expenditure side. We budget for what we need, and if we don't end up needing it, we don't buy it. This isn't, we don't budget like you hear in other government entities where if you don't spend it, you lose it. So people go out and buy crazy stuff at the end of the year just because they don't want to show that they didn't spend it the year before. That's not how we do things at City of Fort Morgan. We're fortunate to be debrused under Tabor, which gives us the opportunity to carry over funds into another year and use them. That's how we have paid for some of our projects in the city. And, you know, the new road at the middle school, for example, was funded by our conservative budgeting philosophy. Now, council ultimately has the call of how we budget. And so if a conservative approach is not necessarily what you would like to do, we can always modify that and do something a little bit different. But for a long time, this has been the philosophy of council. So we'll, we'll continue to follow what has been approved of in the past. So to go through this fairly quickly, I'm going to highlight some of the, the bigger tax, or the bigger revenue sources that we look at in each of the departments. You have this for your specific review, and if you have any questions, please feel free to let me know. Now, the important one is the very, some at the very top there. Property taxes. Assessments went up for some properties, went down for others. The overall assessments went up a little bit. If you look at what we've been able to bring in, 2014 was $1.3 million, actual for, 2016 was $1.6 million. We're looking at $1.4 million for our property tax revenues in 2018. You go down, sales tax is a big one. We know that we had a huge year in 2015. 2014 was pretty big, but we actually were less in 2016 than the two previous years. So we're watching a downward trend for a little bit in the sales tax. We hope that it'll come back up. We, we're confident that all the hard work that's going on in Josh's Department for Economic Development, we'll get some more retail here, stop some of that leakage that's going out, and we'll see those numbers improve. But we're budgeting for sales tax $4 million, a little bit more we have in the past, but I, I think that's a very reasonable number. Jumping down to a couple of very important numbers, if you look at these two numbers here, in lieu of taxes electric, in lieu of taxes gas. In communities that don't own their own utilities, they receive franchise fees and other payments from the utility companies. We are fortunate in that we collect those from ourselves instead of having to fight with Xcel Energy or whoever else it might be that pays those franchise fees. And that's essentially what we get in lieu of the taxes and franchise fees that we would be charging to a private entity to provide those services. And that money comes directly back to the citizen. So what is great about those two numbers is that it demonstrates how our electric and gas departments, as well as our sanitation and sewer departments, prop up the general fund and help us with those costs and expenditures. Everything else stays fairly in line. If, if we see a downward trend, we have put a downward trend in the revenue. If we see an upward trend, we put upward trend in the revenue, but not significant. One of the things we don't do, and hopefully council's okay with this, is we don't do a, this is what we got last year, so this is what we're going to spend this year approach. Some communities do that. They forecast based upon, this is what we did last year and we expect the same thing to happen this year. If you go back and look at our finances and our revenues, we don't have two years that are exactly the same for expenses or revenues. So it's, it's very difficult to say we're going to take what happened last year and apply it to this year. Any questions so far? Just fascinating stuff, isn't it? We do collect a lot of different taxes from various sources and get intergovernmental assistance from various sources as well. Going down really quick to the general fund. So in the general fund, what we're forecasting for next year for revenue overall, when you bring in all of the different areas, fees, taxes, fines, we're looking at $11,071,000 being the number that we will use for our budgeting purposes for next year. Jumping down to the capital improvement fund, in the city's ordinances, we collect 3% sales tax. 1% is specifically set aside for capital types of projects and equipment. It can only be spent on those things. That equates to about $1.9 million is what we're forecasting. If you look backwards, that one-third has equated to be somewhere around between $2.3 and $2.2 million. And so we're, we're going to budget off of $1.9 million next year with the addition of the highway users' tax fees. That's from gas tax. Whenever you fill up your car with gas, we get a certain portion of that, and we get around $300,000 a year. And then, of course, use tax for capital improvements. So we're looking at $2.2 million in the capital fund. Now, one of the things I want to point out, we're going to be coming back shortly to discuss streets, because streets are an important priority for council in the 2018 budget. When we looked at what we needed for streets to get them where they needed to be over the next 15 years, we were looking at about that entire amount, $2.2 to $2.4 million. So if we were to take everything that we spend out of that budget and put it towards streets, we could start making a dent on that. But we're going to come back with what council had suggested we come back with and show you different options and different ways that we can look at getting the necessary money and income to, to address those issues with streets. Any questions about or concerns about the capital improvement fund? This is just history only. The golf fund is now in the general fund, so that's all. This is a fun one. Conservation Trust, for all those people feeling lucky and want to buy a lottery ticket. Not everyone wins, but actually they do, because we get $100,000 that we get to put towards parks improvements that we use for equipment and various other things. So when you play lottery, everybody does win. You may not win directly, but indirectly you will get some of that money. And we do get GoCo grants. Lottery funds go to help support GoCo grants. And I'm not promoting the lottery in one way or another. I'm just saying that you don't win unless you play, and everybody wins, so, somehow.
Okay, go in.
So the electric fund, what we're looking at there is, for a lot of the, the revenue that you see here, it is a direct offset for what we buy electricity for. Because we're a public power and a public utility, we cannot make money off of what we do. It's, we're not in business to make money. Private utilities are allowed under state statute and through the Public Utilities Commission to make a certain percentage of profit for their shareholders, their investors. We have our investors as the public. They help support us by buying electricity from us. And so whatever we pay for the electrons that go into that house, they pay us for those electrons. So a lot of this is just passed through cost to the consumer that turns on the lights. Anyways, if you look at the demand cost, when you look at demand, that's what it costs for us to run an electric department. In most cases, our demand charges, our base charges come out and do that. But anyways, instead of getting into, I won't get into the intricacies of the electric rates, but we're looking at about $23 million for next year. We're watching the electric rates really closely to make sure that we're matching up what the electricity costs for the consumer so they're not overspending or we're not undercollecting. And we'll be doing a, a study on that here pretty soon. The preliminary numbers are looking good, that we won't need to increase rates, and we'll be always looking for opportunities to reduce rates where we can. So right now, things are holding pretty steady, you know. Natural gas stays where it's at, everybody, you know. Everything stays where it's at, we'll, we'll be good. Any questions about the electric? So the water. Water's really important. We're getting ready to do a very large capital improvement project called NISP. We also talked to you last week about a pump station that needs to be constructed. Our revenues have slowly been going up, not necessarily because of rates. We've actually had additional water usage, which is a good thing in our system. But we will have to be looking at rates moving forward to address the costs for NISP. We're also always looking for opportunities to add new customers, and that helps offset the overall cost for everybody else. So we're proposing next year that our total revenues One thing I want to point out, the NISP surcharge, if you look at that, people get this on their bill. For a residential tap, I think it's a, is it a one-inch or three-quarter inch tap? It's by tap size, but it's about, it's five bucks for the average. Three-quarter inch tap is $5, and then it goes up from there. It's tiered. We collect that money specifically for the bank, and we put it in the bank for the funding of NISP. And so everybody is contributing to the NISP project by way of a NISP surcharge every month, which was passed by council several years ago. And we've just been banking that money to build reserves to be ready for that project. Gas department, not a whole lot changes in that department. We're always looking, again, for new customers there to provide service. We don't see any major changes on the horizon right now, and it's pretty steady for what we've seen in the past. We're looking at $4.7 million in that fund.
Jeff, for both water and electric, oh, no, yes, there's an item, PFM Investment Income. Can you teach me about that?
Sure. PFM is the company that won the bid. Basically, we take our reserves and we invest it, and it makes income. Generally, what we do is we just put that income back into reserves and, and build more income off of that. In the electric fund, we have a reserve, a fairly large reserve for a specific reason. One, it keeps us creditworthy, so if we have to, we'll have the, the money available. But also, there are certain things that we somewhat self-insure against. Obviously, if we had a tornado come through town, it will rip down wires and lines and poles and everything else. Our insurance doesn't cover poles. It covers everything on the poles, and it covers the wires. But after the 2013 flood, our insurance carrier and their secondary carrier, they couldn't find insurance to cover poles. And so our poles are not covered, and they're not cheap either. For whatever reason, the preparation of those poles, and they last for a long time, they're not cheap. So we keep money in there so that if we have some sort of a mess, we can, we can clean that. Another one is if we have a... Another one is if we have a...
Transformer.
Transformer, thanks. Thanks, Mayor. A transformer go out, they're not cheap either. You're looking at about $1 million for one of those major transformers if they go out. And then, in addition to the cost of the replacement, you have to bring in a temporary one that's going to cost you money in the meantime. So it's not cheap when we have those things break down. So we maintain a lot of money and reserves in those accounts for those purposes, and then we invest them, because we don't want to just put them in a bank account that doesn't earn any money for the ratepayers.
Thanks.
That's a very good question. And you'll see PFM investment in all of these. We take money in the reserves for each of those funds and invest them. And I will note that we've become a lot more efficient in our investments by going with PFM. We used to have different accounts all over the place, and we've kind of pulled them all together under the requirement, and also maintain the requirements of the charter to invest in various banks within the community. But then we've also pulled everything together, and it makes things a lot more efficient and easier to track. Now, this is a depressing number for some. Perpetual care is for the cemetery. But if you go by there, it's really not that depressing. It's very green, well-maintained, and that's what the perpetual care fund is for. A certain percentage of all the lots sold goes into a trust fund that the interest off of that goes directly into the general fund to help offset costs for maintaining the cemetery. It's not near enough of what the cost is, but it's a very good setup for us to work with that. We're looking at about $9,000. I know it looks like it's going down, and it kind of is going down. We're actually seeing a lot more columbariums being sold than we are lots, so...
And how come we don't get revenue from the columbariums?
We do get revenue from the columbariums. Oh, we got that in a different spot. It's in the general fund. Yeah. Because the perpetual care fund is just for lots sold. It didn't cover the columbarium unit. This is always a fun one. Self-insurance. We self-insure on a lot of different levels and then reinsure. We've got healthcare that we insure for. We have life, disability, Cobra. We have lots of different line items that we need to collect money on, property and casualty. We pay premiums for reinsurance. We insure some of our stuff. We obviously have deductibles we have to pay. We collect revenue from all of the different departments to cover this. So when you get your budget, you'll see expenses for property and casualty and for health insurance. That all goes into this account, and then we run insurance out of that. So we're looking at about $3.5 million for 2018 is the revenue coming into that. One of the things that we're looking at, I think it's important to note, is that we do everything that we can to be responsible for taxpayers', ratepayers' money, as well as provide the best possible benefits for our employees. In the last three years, we've increased premium costs to employees by 30%. Well, including 2018, it would be by 30%. It may be more. It just depends on where we get with the numbers this year. But that's not necessarily to say that we're not treating our employees well, because we have a very good healthcare package for families and for employees. And the costs of healthcare just keep going up, and it's something that we look at very closely. Then we'll be looking at that. It'll be one of the first things we look at, I think, in June. And then, Riverview Commons GID, that's the gift that keeps on giving, as we like to say. And until all of the bond payments are paid off down there, we'll continue to collect about $29,000 a year and pay it to the bank. And we're hoping to get those things moved here pretty quick and clean up the mess down there and get some houses built down there. Be some additional customers for our retail establishments, but also additional customers for our utilities. So overall, what we're looking at for revenue next year is $55,887,000. Five hundred and, yeah, $55,887,561. We left off the pennies, but sometimes we like to go ahead.
I was going to ask you if you could carry that out a little bit further.
You know, it is kind of funny you say that, because when we do our rates of pay, like, you know, you see the rate of pay for minimum wage is like 9.57. But the City of Fort Morgan, your rate of pay is 10.0721. We take it out four places. I don't know why, but we do. And, you know, we have a very good accounting department that tracks numbers for employees all the way out to the fourth decimal. So it works great, doesn't it, Gene?
Yeah.
Works great.
Figures are fun, huh?
Yeah.
So I want to thank council for your continued assistance in putting together the budget. This is, again, the front end, somewhat of the easy stuff. We're going to start getting the more difficult stuff as we get towards the end of the budget if we have expenses that exceed that $55 million, and we've got to start figuring things out. But as staff, we like to make sure we're bringing something to you that meets your expectations on the front end and making sure that we fall within these numbers as best as we can. So if there are no more questions, that will be the revenues that we work from. Thank you very much.
Is the other document we got, the summary by fund, is that just, that was just informational?
That's the income statement for the March.
Yes.
And that's, so it's through the first quarter?
Yep.
Through the end of March. Okay. Thank you.
There you go.
Next, we have the consent agenda. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's consent agenda includes Item A, approval of the disbursements and payroll for April, and Item B, approval of the minutes of the May 2, 2017 City Council regular meeting. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Would entertain a resolution?
Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution approving the consent agenda.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is public comment or audience participation for items not on the agenda. Anybody wish to address council? Seeing none, reports by officials and staff.
Well, I'll just start out really quick by recognizing our police department and our police chief. They've been working really hard on a lot of different things, community policing being one of them. You see a lot of press releases on the things that are going on there. I know that our new chief is doing a really good job in getting everybody motivated and focused on those things, and I want to thank him and his department. Some very important assistance to the county in a recent arrest, which was very good, and I know that that was very good coordination between the county and the city and everybody involved with that, the district attorney. I think it's important to know that we have professionals that are out there 24/7 watching out for our safety, and when something goes awry, they work even harder to make sure that we're addressing the safety concerns within the city. So I wanted to thank Chief Schultz and his department for all their help in recent issues that have affected our community and their endeavors right now to make sure that we are addressing community policing in a way that's effective. So thanks to the chief and his department. I know we've got all of a bunch, we have a whole lot of other things going on right now, and I don't know, go ahead and come on up one at a time, or two at a time, however you'd like to.
No, it was our, one at a time.
One at a time. No, it's our.
I just have two things. I wanted to thank, I don't know if anybody from Cargill is listening tonight, but I wanted to thank them for their efforts this weekend. We've been in a couple-year process of trying to change out all of the water meters in the facility. They have three very large meters, and we needed to coordinate a complete plant shutdown over the weekend to finish up that work. And at the same time, they installed backflow protection on their lines as we were doing the new water meters and bypass systems for them. And so, big thanks to them. I mean, that takes a lot for us to be able to call them up and say, "Hey, we're going to shut you down for the better part of a day." And so, I always appreciate them working with us. They're a good community partner when it comes to those things. The other big thing is fiber. If you guys noticed, we've got, depending on the day, we've got up to six boring crews working all at the same time. Not only is that running my electric guys around checking on what they're putting in the ground, but we also then are having to check all of our utility crossings as they're going across, you know, as they bore against them and everything. And so we do want people to understand that this is a, you know, multi-month-long project. There is some work being done behind sidewalks that's still within city right-of-way, that we're disturbing grass areas. We're trying not to break sprinkler systems, but the contractors are being given lists of areas that they need to go back in and fix, and that's part of their contract. Everything is supposed to be restored back to the way that it was. But we have to set those boring rigs up in areas to where they can bore in, get underneath the sidewalks in a lot of cases, and then be out of that area. So we're disturbing a few things. I've taken a few phone calls, so if you have people calling you about that, if they don't see something resolved in the next couple of months, have them get in contact with me, and we'll make sure that the contractors get that fixed and everything. And so, and if the newspaper would like to see them working tomorrow, they're working right here outside the backside of the fire department. They were actually running conduit in the ground as they pulled up to the meeting tonight. So they're, yeah, they're definitely doing a lot right now. But everything's going along really good. We only had, so far, in the first couple of weeks, we've only broke one phone line that wasn't marked, so...
Marked now, huh?
But that's doing, doing really good since we got in the ground. So anyhow, that's all I had.
Thanks, Brett.
Great, thanks.
So a couple of quick things, because I've already taken enough of your time tonight. At each of your workstations is the High Plains Trail Mix. This is the replacement for what has been the annual toasted corn campaign. So we've sweetened things up this year with our High Plains Trail Mix blend, so I hope you enjoy that. I bring it to your attention, because our first party in the park is June 8. The next time I see you will be June 6, so that doesn't give us a whole lot of time to plan for that. So we love volunteers. We love council support for these things. Live at the Park series kicks off Thursday night, June 8, and that'll be our first party in the park as well, leading up to that concert kickoff, so...
Who's the concert?
Concert's Buckstein kicking things off this year. Seems to be kind of the local favorite in our neck of the woods a couple of times a year over the last few years, so he'll kick things off. Secondly, with a lot of, obviously, construction activity going on and around town, we meet Friday with the developers building the Fairfield Inn. You'll see construction trailers that have shown up down off Cottonwood and Riverview. So questions arise down there. We're pulling permits for those guys here pretty quick and meet with them on Friday, so just a heads up there. And then finally, Brian McIner Museum's doing a lot of great things. If you haven't been down there recently, there's a new exhibit that's been put on display. But included down there is Art Davidson's most recent donation of J.P. Curry's carriage, something Brian spent a lot of time working on. Art Davidson's a friend of Lynn Deal's, and the carriage has been completely restored, beautiful piece, and is housed currently in the lower gallery in conjunction with the William Henry Jackson display that'll be on that lower gallery floor until probably about the end of September, so if you get a chance to head that way and see it. With that, Brian, through his conversations, has requested and been granted the ability to use this carriage as an educational artifact. It's, it will be in our permanent collection. He'll find a place for it in the main gallery upstairs, but as an educational artifact, we can put it in a parade. We can, you know, have kids in it for pictures and tours and so forth, so really unique piece, a lot of ties to the community locally, and so the staff over there is pretty thrilled about this. So if you want to take a peek, it's on display currently and in our possession for many years to come. So, thank you.
Good question for you.
Yep.
Turn my mic off. The part, or the concert in the park series, what time do those start?
Concerts, 6:30 to 8:00. So our party in the park will probably run about 5:30 to 6:30 or until food runs dry. Our utility guys have bought a fascinating new grill to use at all of our city events, so this thing, it's going to be its inaugural run, most likely, at the party in the park, so...
And you'll be sending out requests for volunteers?
Yeah, we'll send that out through the city email chain. I don't know how possessive they'll be of their new equipment or not, but if you want to get on the grill, I'm sure they'll let you.
I'm not allowed to use the grill.
Is that Mr. Ryers? Are you going to grill again?
And just as a sidebar, we're on the party in the park. We're going to partner with the PD on a special event they're doing later this year and extend our concert series by an additional week, and the final concert slash party in the park will be on a Tuesday night, which will be the first Tuesday in August, and will run every Thursday between then.
Great. Thank you.
So, yeah, come out. We definitely want to promote the party in the park. It doesn't usually take a lot of promotion, but it's a lot of fun. We get a lot of people out there. It'll be good entertainment, and it's a great opportunity for everybody to get out and meet their neighbors, meet people, and just enjoy the summer here in Fort Morgan. You know, you've heard a lot of things tonight about different employees doing a great job, and I have to say that our employees do a great job. You know, we do make mistakes every now and then, but by and large, I would have to say that our employees are outstanding, and they really are working hard for the citizens, and want to thank them and, you know, appreciate them for what they do. Because everybody has a different job, and everybody tries to do it well, and I appreciate the water, the sewer, the sanitation, so... And we appreciate all council support in what we're trying to do here for the citizens, so...
I would agree. I think that the employees in, for our city and everything, are kind of the antithesis of what everybody expects from a, quote, "government employee." I really do think that they've managed to instill all our managers and everything real code of service and dedication that you don't typically see.
Thank you. I'd agree. So that's all we have for announcements. Any questions?
At the senior...
Next. Go ahead.
At the senior advisory board meeting, the, there's a lot of discussion about the sugar plant. So, and most of them hadn't realized that it was on county property, so I just, I told them I'd come back and ask about moving forward with, if there's any new news about working together with the sugar plant.
Kind of. We met with them and the county commissioners. I also know that there's going to be an air quality control meeting with the State Air Quality Commission here in Fort Morgan in this room, I think, next Friday, or an upcoming Friday. We can definitely get that out.
I'm not sure.
Not sure when that is. I'll have to look at my calendar. I know there, no, it's over at the county building. Never mind. It's at the old courthouse. So, you know, there's always opportunities for people to let their government-appointed officials on the state level know their concerns, but, yeah, it's not getting any better.
Do we have that number posted on our website, or...
No, we were, there is another meeting, though. There's the Western Sugar Community Meeting with the county commissioners, which is on the 23rd at the county commissioners' meeting room at 6:00 p.m.
Maybe that's what the meeting was, I think.
Wasn't there an article in the paper this week?
Yeah. Matt talked about that. And we can put that phone number, which was in that article. They've started a hotline, and I think maybe they gave an email address as well for complaints, but, yeah, there was a story in the newspaper, and it's not the air quality control. It's, that's coming up as well, but the actual Western Sugar management team will be there to listen.
And we met with them about two or three weeks ago, and they were showing us some of the things that they were implementing, and I'm sure that'll come things that they were implementing, and I'm sure that'll come out at this meeting, that they were implementing to try and get rid of the smell, or eliminate some of the smell. They're just having a hard time this year with the new processes and things that they've had in place, and they're having to run the plant a lot longer than they normally would have run it. You'll, usually by this time of the year, you don't see any of the coal smoke or steam or anything coming out of there, but they're still firing it up and processing, so. You know, in shutting down other plants and bringing them here, you go, your campaign's going to get longer and longer, because you're going to have more and more beats, so. But yes, it is in the county. Thank you for pointing that out.
So, when I report back, just, yeah, if I can get all those details about the meeting that's next week, and then just shout out on social media about...
Or direct them back to the, or direct them back to the city's webpage.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll email it to you, and I'll put something on our website about it.
Great, thank you so much, John. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Bits, meetings, and announcements, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city is accepting sealed proposals for chlorine scrubber replacement until 3:00 PM on May 24th. Engineering and surveying services, plating and road design for the Centerpoint Plaza until 4:00 PM on May 25th. Proposals for a trails master plan until 4:00 PM on May 25th. Proposals for tennis court design build until 4:00 PM on May 25th, and proposals for a skate park design build until 4:00 PM on May 25th. And also, sent out a request for information to gauge the interest in providing gigabit-speed broadband services until 4:00 PM on June 1st. Under meetings, the planning commission is scheduled to meet May 22 at 4:30 PM. The Heritage Foundation meets on the 25th at 4:00 PM, and then all city offices are closed for Memorial Day on May 29. The next city council regular meeting will be June 6, here at City Hall at 6:00 PM. Just a quick, couple of announcements. Summer reading program, registration started Monday. The programs will be in June and July. It's a free program and different age groups, so sign up at the library for that. Josh mentioned the William Henry Jackson photo and painting exhibit at the museum, which also has a carriage. There will be a talking circle at the library on May 23, from noon to 1:00 PM, in the community room, to talk about memories of the World War II era. And with Memorial Day coming up, the cemetery staff asks that decorations not on gravestone foundations be put, not be put out until May 26, the Friday before the holiday weekend, and then they can remain there throughout the following week.
Next, we have an executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators. Under CRS Section 24-6-4024E, and the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Economic incentives. I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Your Honor, I take the motion that we are doing in the executive session.
Have a motion and a second to go in. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?